Okay, this is the May 18th Board of Selectmen Meeting in Lakeville. As is our usual, I will go through the readings of the new rules. Agenda item number one, in accordance with the Governor's Order, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20 relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency. The May 18th, 2020 Public Meeting of the Board of Selectmen shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lakecam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. The meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecam.tv. I will read the rest of our rules here. As a preliminary matter, my name is Leah Fabian, Chairman of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen. Allow me to confirm that the members of the staff and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. So first I will say Rich LaCamera, Selectman, I believe you're with us?
I am.
Maureen Pandito, Town Administrator. Somewhere, I thought she was here.
You're on mute.
He's on mute, okay.
That's my fault.
Okay. And I saw Tracy is here as well, Tracy Craig McGee, who's the Executive Assistant to Selectmen and Town Administrator.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I will sort of roll call people as we get to their agenda item. This open meeting of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's Order suspends the requirement of the Open Meeting Law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with this agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. We typically have not had public comment, but at this point, we are going to attempt public comment at this meeting barring any technical difficulties. So please bear with us. If you do send in a question and we can't answer it because of technical issues, we will be sure to get it answered either at our next meeting or privately directly to you, I guess we could say. For this meeting, the Lakeville Board of Selectmen is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the town's website. For Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference accordingly. Please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided, members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. Public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. So we already did our first item on the agenda. But permit me to go over some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any common questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in conversation with other members, please do so through the Chair taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment. Am I muted?
You're back.
Okay, I'm back. For items with public comment, which we will be attempting, after members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comment as follows. The Chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has a list of public commentators, I will call on each. But I believe we're going to get questions through LakeCam. So finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. We all have that. All right. Agenda item number two. We are going to go to announcements. So in response to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, early voting by mail is available for elections held before June 30th, 2020. This will give voters an opportunity to vote by mail to eliminate large turnouts at the polling place. We highly recommend that voters take advantage of this option and early vote by mail for the annual town election scheduled for June 16th, 2020. You can obtain an early voting ballot by sending a signed request to the town clerk's office or by filling out and returning the early voting application available on the town's website. Applications can be returned by mail, dropped off in the silver box in front of Town Hall, or submitted by email to eldrane@lakevilleMA.org, but only through email if your signature is visible on the application. Your early voting ballot must be received by the town clerk before the polls close at 8:00 PM on Election Day. If I went over that too quickly, basically, you can call the town clerk's office for instructions on how to get an application for an absentee ballot. And we are encouraging folks to do that. So if you don't want to go to the polls on June 16th, you don't have to. You can vote by mail. I did it and it only took a couple of days to get the actual application in the mail.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
I just want to say something about that. The, you know, this process, you know, was mandated, you know, by the legislature and that we had to have our election by June 30th. If that was going to be changed, they were going to have to do it by special legislation, which they haven't done and they have no intention, you know, in doing that at this point. And the town clerk is doing everything that she can to try to promote the early voting, which now, we've always had absentee voting, but now the legislature is saying we can have early voting. So I want people to realize that this is not a town decision. This is a state legislature that made this decision.
Yep. Nope, it has nothing to do with us. And as a matter of fact, the town clerk was with us last week and she did explain that, you know, there's so many rules and everything that she has to follow. This wasn't during the election with the absentee ballots was not a decision that Rich and I as the selectmen made. This is actually a decision coming from the state. But if you are one of those people who doesn't want to go to the polls because you're not ready to, you know, possibly be standing near a lot of people or whatever the case may be, if you're going to be away or you can, as long as what you're sending to the town clerk's office has your signature on it, your name on it and your address, you should be getting that absentee ballot back to you in the mail. That ballot that you get has to be returned to the clerk's office by the close of Election Day, which is 8:00 PM on Election Day, June 16th. Of course, if you don't understand any of this, if you want to talk to the clerk's office, please just call Town Hall. They will definitely help you. Like I said, we got our ballots within a couple of days. So also from the town clerk, she is still urging residents to return the local census. The census can be mailed back to her or dropped off in the drop box in front of Town Hall or the census can be completed online. Yep.
Um, last week, the town clerk indicated there were approximately 800 households that had not returned the census. So it's important that they get it in or they can be dropped from the voter lists.
Yep, I do know that last presidential election, I actually had a couple of friends that were dropped from the voter list and they later found out it was because they hadn't completed the census. So again, that is not a local rule. That's not a rule that, you know, the selectmen or town administrator or anyone has any control over. We just try to make sure everyone in town knows what these rules are so that they won't get dropped from the voter list. Plus the census, you know, that helps us when we get funding, you know, be counted. A message from the animal control officer. Please remind residents that the town has a leash law and that all dogs must be leashed when not on your property, including on any public grounds like Betty's neck. Let's see, from, actually, we have the Police Chief with us, Chief Perkins. I think you have an announcement.
Sure, thank you very much. I do have a quick announcement. I just wanted everybody to know that this coming holiday weekend, Sunday and Monday, we're going to be doing a food drive here at the police station. We've been challenged or we're challenging the Middleborough Police Department to see who can come up with the largest amount of non-perishable donated goods. I think in this time, people want to know what they can do to help and they can donate non-perishable food items because there are people who are food insecure. So we'll be donating to benefit local food banks, Meeting House Church Food Bank and the St. Vincent de Paul Food Bank. And that'll be this Sunday and Monday, 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. All the information will be on our Facebook page. They'll be able to drive right up here in the parking lot of the Lakeville Police Department and make that donation.
Okay, that sounds good. And I do know that some of these food places have phone numbers that you can reach out to if you yourself are having difficulty. We've done the St. Vincent de Paul announcement a couple of weeks, actually three weeks in a row. So I'll just give their phone number, which they're located in Middleborough. I'm not quite sure where Meeting House Church, is that the one in Lakeville? No, where is that? Does anyone know?
That's in Middleborough.
Middleborough, they're 508-947-1189. Again, that will be going on this weekend. Thank you to the police staff for doing that. I think we could probably fill our cruiser more than Middleborough, right?
I believe so too.
Okay, so I have a message, an announcement here that I believe the Historical Society has canceled all their Memorial Day events. Is that correct, Tracy?
Yes.
It says Nancy LaFave and she's representing the Historical Society, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then Joanne Uprem from Litterlifters. They're canceling Litterlifters too this weekend, right? But we can-
I don't know if it was this weekend. That's going to be for later on in the agenda when we have the list of the events that will be canceled.
Okay, so we'll go over that one, but we could have another cancellation there. All right, so next on the agenda, we're going to welcome back Police Chief Perkins to discuss some job descriptions and take it away, Chief Perkins.
Thank you very much. I have submitted for your review and approval eight job descriptions. Job descriptions will last officially approved in 1998. They've always been updated and different assignments through personnel order. Part, when I took over, part of how I wanted to do it is to just organize these, to track when when they were instituted and when they were revised, if any revisions took place. Because we had some new jobs or job title changes. For example, the dispatcher. We used to call it Police Dispatcher. Now it's because we're dispatching for the Fire Department, we now call that Police and Fire Dispatcher. The job description of Police Lieutenant has changed. So that's in front of you. Sergeant has changed. So the eight jobs Court Prosecutor is one that was just, we didn't have an official. We did have an official one that was from 1998, but a lot of the duties have changed in that. School Resource Officer, we never had an official School Resource Officer job description. It was always an assignment with just a personnel order. So this outlines all the duties, responsibilities. And if you notice on all of these, they have referenced numbers and those are the accreditation standards. As you know, the Lakeville Police Department is in the self-assessment phase of the accreditation process. We hope to become certified and then in the future become accredited. And part of that is to have official job descriptions that reference their standards in the job descriptions. So I have them all for you for review. And if you have any questions on any of them, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. Rich, do you have any comments on these?
Oh, I wrote them all over the weekend.
I know, I did too.
Sorry for the homework.
There's a lot of work here, Chief, and I really, I could tell some of it was just like little housekeeping things. Some of it was just, you know, how job descriptions have changed. Pretty sure you worked with Clarinda on some of it too, who's our human resource person.
Yes.
So there's a lot of work done here by you and by her. And I really appreciate all those efforts. It's a, anyone can see, it's a whole stack of papers here, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised job descriptions for Lieutenant Sergeant, Police Officer, Court Prosecutor, Detective, School Resource Officer, Police/Fire Dispatcher and Matron.
Second that. Any other conversation? Rich, conversation?
No, I'm all set, thanks.
All right. All those in favor, Fabian I?
LaCamera I.
Thank you, Chief. It's a lot of work.
Thank you very much for your time and I would like to personally thank the Human Resources Director, Clarinda Dumphy for her help as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
So agenda item number four, discuss FY21 budget.
Oops.
Is that where we're at? I didn't skip ahead.
Yes.
So all I'll say is that there's a lot of talk out there on, you know, because people are hearing how our budgets are going to be affected. And I got a few questions and calls, what are we doing? We're doing as much as we can right now. You can take it away, Rich, because you are our budget person officially.
Well, Maureen and I and Todd, our Town Accountant, you know, have looked at the 21 budget and, you know, have identified, you know, some revenue options that we can use to try to balance the budget if we are cut substantially from state aid. So, I mean, we looked at numbers from 10% and 20% and, you know, level funded or whatever. We're not as reliant, you know, on state aid as a lot of other communities are. I think the number, if I'm not mistaken, Maureen, is about a million dollars altogether. And 880 of that is, you know, lottery money. So we're waiting, just like everybody else, you know, to determine, you know, what they're going to do. And I would say probably in the next couple of weeks, we'll probably have an idea as to what we may or may not have to do. Now, as I've said a couple of times in a couple of meetings, we have, the budget has been updated and is ready to go. And depending upon what happens, we'll adjust it accordingly if we have to. We're hoping that that is not the case, but you never know. So one of the other problems is the regional school districts, you know, are separate from the town budget. Of course, we fund, you know, that budget accordingly based upon our assessment and that is all up in the air, you know, as well right now. So if I had a better answer, we all had a better answer. You know, we'd give it to you, but right now, the only thing that we've heard that Maureen has heard recently and I have heard is potentially a 10% to 20%, you know, reduction, you know, in the state aid. And hopefully it's not worse than that, but 10% is probably something we can deal with. You know, if it gets up to be 50%, then we have an issue that we have to deal with. But right now, we're staying the course. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks, and we still have time, to adjust it and put it all together, you know, before town meeting. So that's where we are.
I will also reiterate that, to begin with, we don't get the percentage wise of funding as some other cities and towns. But still, what we would stand to lose if those projections do come in is, you know, we would feel it in our budget. So we are definitely, you know, looking at it. I do know that some folks have, you know, said to me specifically, well, why do you have to raise taxes? I just want everyone to know that we, the Selectmen or the Finance Committee or the assessors, they just don't sit down and say, gee, I think we should raise taxes or not this year. It's a whole process, sometimes done by algorithms and everything else. It's not, we have to follow mass state law. It's just not as simple as you and I, Rich, being the Board of Selectmen saying, okay, we're not going to raise taxes this year. I mean, you know, it's not, that's not our choice. We have to go and do what the law says we have to do. So even if you and I wanted to cut taxes, we couldn't necessarily do that. It doesn't work like, you know, whatever, some federal government people think they have some control over that. It doesn't work that way on the local, on a local level. So definitely, we're all looking at it, our Town Accountant, our Town Administrator. Everybody is keeping an eye on all these things on a daily basis. And, you know, the best thing we have going for us is that we planned for a, you know, level services. We didn't plan any major increases in our budget. So that was good thinking on the part of the Town Administrator, the Town Accountant and Rich LaCamera at the beginning of our budget season. So all right, Maureen, anything else on budget?
Just to add in, everything we need to know stems from not only our budget, but looking at the state and where the state is every year. And we have to wait for the state to finalize their numbers before we can really understand where our numbers are going to land. And then Rich and I and Town Accountant have been coming up with Plan A, B, C and D to make sure, you know, wherever we land, that we have a plan to either, you know, use one-time revenues in some cases or shore up or just not move forward with some projects. And I don't know if Rich mentioned it, but we have more concerns about the 2022 budget than we do about the 2021. And that's just the nature of not knowing what's going to be happening and going forward with COVID-19 and how many more financial impacts will be realized over the coming months. So we've, we've got plans in place and I don't think Rich or I have worried that much that we're going to go off a cliff because, to reiterate, we're not a heavy tourist town. We're not reliant on tourist dollars, on restaurant dollars, on a lot of business dollars. So we're not experiencing something like a Plymouth or anywhere on Cape Cod is experiencing now for a revenue shortfall. So our losses will be moderate compared to other towns. And I think we've provided some good structure that we've got some good plans in place if any of those scenarios pull forward.
You know, to that, to that, a few years back, it was proposed at town meeting that we add our own local sales tax, which other places do. I think Rainham does and everything else. We don't have that. So other towns will be losing that money. We don't have that to lose anyways. We can be, we have a balanced budget without having that. At that time, you know, it was decided, but that is a revenue source that a lot of places that are tourist places and not are going to be losing. So, you know, I would caution people when they, you know, hear a lot of this stuff in the news, we may not be in the same situation as every other municipality. So, you know, like you just said, the tourism and everything. So we just, I just want to let people know that just because they say, oh, you're going to lose this, doesn't mean it's going to affect us in the same way. But we get it, we're all getting emails every single day from the state. And Maureen, you probably get the most. So I trust you will keep getting the information to us, so.
Just, just one more follow-up on this, just so everybody knows, and I think we've mentioned it a few times, is that, you know, the state is requiring us right now to have a town meeting, you know, by June 30th. So there's no ifs, ands or buts. And if they want to change that, then they need to do it by special legislation or if they want, excuse me, if they want us to have a 112 budget, you know, for July and August and so forth. So that's what everybody's waiting for, is for their decision and their direction, you know, to the cities and towns. Because I know all the other towns around us have already scheduled their town meetings as we have and we're about to vote on the warrant, the next couple of items down here. So this is not a case, you know, that we necessarily want to have a town meeting. We are required by legislature to have a town meeting and that's what they voted on and that's where we're standing right now, so.
Yep. And that budget too, that we're all talking about, that I know a lot of people are concerned with, that's all public information. We're not, you know, someone, as soon as it's ready for publication, it can go to anyone, so.
And they also have a right to vote at a town meeting if they want.
Yeah, yep. If you're a registered voter in the town of Lakeville, you can come to a meeting and, you know, review the budget and even yell "hold" and the moderator will get you an explanation on something that you don't understand. So we welcome people coming to town meeting. Okay, so from there, I think we'll just go right into agenda item number five, which is the capital plan, FY21, the capital plan. I know last week, Rich, you said that, pretty much, we slashed our capital plan in half, so.
Well, once again, working with Maureen and the Town Administrator and the department heads, you know, looking at ways to reduce the capital request because, you know, as we had said, we have over a million dollars in free cash and we want to make sure that we protect ourselves and be very, very conservative on what we look for our capital projects right now. So the Town Administrator has come up with a final list here and it's a total of $515,000, which is, as you said, is about half of the monies available. So if anybody, if you, if anybody has any questions, I know we've talked about this probably three or four times, then I'm ready to approve this capital plan for the for the annual town meeting. So I'll make a motion to approve the capital plan, the amount of $515,000, which is half of the amount requested for the annual town meeting.
Okay, I second that. Do we want to read it in for the record, Tracy? Do you want us to do that or?
No, I think it's as presented.
Yeah, all the information can be found on the website, right?
It will.
It's part of the packet.
Yeah, it's part of the packet.
Oh, that's true. It is out there, right? That's right, Maureen.
Okay, so, yeah, I don't have any further discussion, Rich. I think you guys have done a great- I think you guys have done a great job. I've had very, the least amount of input. And I think you guys have done a really good job at.
Okay, just to follow up to that, I think that unfortunately, our process of reviewing this with the Capital Expenditure Committee, because the whole situation has not gone as we expected it to be. But what I would like to do sometime in the next couple of weeks, Maureen, is maybe set up a Zoom meeting with the members so we can go get this to them. And then we can go over that just so they feel proud of the process, because the whole thing kind of fell apart. So.
And not to mention, this, for us, this isn't the be-all and end-all of the process. We do intend on looking at these capital items again for, depending on where our cash situation lies and where everything lies at maybe the fall town meeting. So this isn't like, it's not like these items are completely dead, the ones that we didn't go through. There is another opportunity that we could be able to have them participate in funding the other, you know, potentially a half a million dollars.
That's a good point. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, and just for history's sake, for some maybe new viewers that are tuning in, there's a Capital Expenditures Committee that wasn't meeting for a few years. And with the town moderator appoints, I believe it's two people to that committee, and one, and the town administrator is on that committee. And there's a member of the Finance Department, Finance Committee on that, on that committee. So.
And a member of the board of selectmen, yeah.
And one person from the board of selectmen. So they all make up a group, and typically, all the capital plans, we were trying to put that into place when all the COVID-19 stuff started happening. So, but like Maureen said, we're going to have to revisit some of this. So it'll be nice to have that committee working again. So without any further ado, all those in favor of the F1, FY21 capital plan?
LaCamera, aye.
Fabian, aye. Oh my God, so much work done here. Number six, review and vote on articles for annual and special town meeting warrants. Town meeting is June 23rd, 2020, at the high school. So. I will do this, yes?
Will you start? On the cover page, the motion lists for the annual, Article 1 through 11, that is changed now to Articles 1 through 10, with the latest revision, I said.
Um, okay. Motion, yeah, the one that you just sent, like, right before the meeting, right? Yes? Okay. All right, so. I will make a motion to place Articles 1 through 5 on the special town meeting warrant for June 23rd.
You want to do the special first, or which one?
It's first in line, so.
Okay, whatever you want. Yeah, okay.
Okay. Any discussion on those, Rich? 1 through 5, Articles 1 through 5?
I'll second your motion. No, the only thing, you know, once again, I know we've talked about this a couple of meetings, that we are required, once again, by legislature, based upon what finally happens, to have the budget items, all the budget items on the annual town meeting, and any non-budgeted items to be on the special. So that's what we have divided up between the two.
Yep. Okay. Any other? No, I don't have any comment. We've gone over them a bunch of times. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Fabian, aye. And then I'll make a motion to place Articles 1 through 10. Hold on one second, please. Just want to be sure I'm looking at the right thing. To place Articles 1 through 10 on the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Any conversation on that one?
No, I'm all set. Can I ask a question, Maureen?
Yep.
Tracy? I'm sorry, never mind. I see it. I'm all set. Never mind.
What was your question?
The question was the time on the special town meeting. I see it down below. It's all set.
Okay.
Okay.
I thought what I was looking at was what I just printed off, but it says 1 through 10. So did I grab the wrong copy? Hold on. Because the one I have has an 11 on it.
The one with the 11, the difference is we removed the $30,000 item off the article off there. I can share my screen and put the new one up if you would.
Yeah, I know. I just printed the new one, and I don't know. I thought I put it. I just want to see what I'm looking at here. I got it. Sorry. Yes, okay. I should know, because it comes really small like this. Okay, 1 through 10. All right. All those in favor of Articles 1 through 10 on the annual town meeting? Fabian, aye.
LaCamera, aye.
All right. Trying to stay organized. Okay. Next Agenda Item, number seven. Discuss postponing public events in Lakeville through September 7th, 2020. All right, take it away.
Well, all of the road races and bike races have been canceled, except for one, actually two.
Yep.
And one is July 25th, and one is August 10th or 12th, I think it is. Including the city of Boston and the city in New Bedford, they have all canceled these large events. And the one on August 12th is between 750,000 people, you know, involved. And it's a combination of the, it's triathlon, you know, and it's tons of people in one area. And the other thing would be that, in the past, we would have to provide our ambulances and all of our first responders, you know, to be there in case of emergencies and stuff like that. And I talked to the chief. The chief doesn't think that's a good idea right now to have our fire department and our first responders, you know, exposed to that many people. So I would make a motion that we notify Sun's Multi-Sports and Sunken Island Road Race that they cancel their races until at least after.
I'll second that. I agree. And even, as the governor today said, we can count on each of these phases of reopening being a minimum of like three weeks. So that takes us, you know, I don't even want to run the risk of having to cancel these things last minute, because I know these people have to put out money too and everything. So.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
We do have one, the Patriot Triathlon, that is scheduled for September 5th. So Labor Day is September 7th.
Okay, that's the one that just uses some of our roads, but doesn't start and end at Ted Williams, correct?
That one starts at Free Town at Cathedral Camp.
There's only one problem with that, is that the race is coming down Island Road and going down Route 18. And I don't know the other, the other road. So I don't know if anybody's talked to Free Town about what their plans are, if they've postponed that race or not.
Yep.
Well, I haven't had a hold of anyone from Free Town yet, and.
I would, I would, I don't mind tabling that one, because it's Labor Day weekend, till we can talk about it and actually talk to Free Town, because it's not like we control the start and stop place either. But as far as the other two are concerned, I would really like to try to get them rescheduled.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
When I spoke to the organizers of both races, they were, for Sunken Island, he said he was just waiting for the state, and he has no problem rescheduling. And Mark Walter from Sun Sports had said the same, that he would reschedule if the town asked him to.
Okay. I just think it's really difficult for us, because if Free Town says, "No, you can have the race", and then we say, "No, you can't use our roads", then they would have to redo their courses. I don't know. So I don't know if maybe we can talk to Free Town before we make that decision. But as far as the actual one, the August Cranberry Triathlon and the Sunken Island Road Race. I.
That's fine.
Yeah. Why don't we do that? And then if we can just put the Patriot back on the next agenda, so we can just hear what Free Town decided.
Madam Chair? I would make the suggestion that Tracy not give preference, but take into consideration, anyone with the triathlon has swimming, and maybe they should be earlier in the season, as opposed to pushing them off until a later time. So give them that ability to, you know, swim and not freeze.
Yeah. So, Rich, your intention though by this is to go to September 7th, which probably is Labor Day. That is Labor Day the 7th?
Yes.
Well, the Sun Multi-Sports does the Patriot Triathlon, and they're doing it, I think, knowing that on September 5th, they're not going to be doing it.
Right.
Right after that. I don't.
Right, they're not going to do both of them. But either way, I think we need to delay, to delay them. So your motion was to delay the August Cranberry Triathlon and the Sunken Island Road Race till after September 7th, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I seconded that. So let's take a vote on that. All those in favor? Fabian, aye.
LaCamera, aye.
Okay, and then we can get back to the Patriot Triathlon.
Okay, I'll reach out to Free Town.
Yep.
It also, it also involves Rochester, too.
Yeah, so we should, you know, talk to all them. So as of today, the Tour de Creme PMC Kids Ride and Mixtape Cycling Events have been canceled. The Lakeville Arts Council has two summer concerts scheduled for July. Those are the ones that are being canceled also. Is that correct?
Well, we want to talk to, that's why Joanne Upton is on here. I, I would say that since the governor's, you know, release, you know, it's still only 10 people, you know, right now. And with everybody canceling the events, I think that those concerts should be canceled as well. Now, then the discussion becomes the Lakeville Arts Festival, which is October 30ish, if I remember the date correctly. That's okay. I think if we leave that in place right now, because as we go along here, you know, they're going to be, you know, changing the guidelines and so forth. So that would be my opinion. I guess you can ask Joanne, who's on here, I believe, still?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Okay.
So Joanne Upham, and you are from, representing the Lakeville Arts Council, correct?
Correct.
We're doing your roll call here, making sure we know who you are.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what can you tell us about, what are the dates anyways in July?
The July dates were, we were, we usually do three concerts, and this year, we were just doing two, because when this whole COVID came down, I stopped calling bands.
Yep.
And July 7th and 21st. And I totally understand, as does the council, because we've discussed it, about canceling. Because even though we know we only get so many people that show up generally, it doesn't mean chances like this, that people don't decide, who wouldn't normally come, that they want to come out.
Yep.
And then that just makes it, you know, more than what we want out there. So we understand.
Yep.
As far as, as far as the festival goes, that's October 3. And it's our 16th year. And what we really would like to do is give the, you know, the residents an opportunity to get out and do some celebration. Hopefully, if things are better at that point. And to give the cultural community their opportunity to prosper, because festivals and all types of craft shows are being canceled left and right all summer.
Yep. I mean, I think, you know, October 3rd should be kind of a safe date. I don't, I wouldn't want to decide on that one this early.
No, I agree. I agree. I was thinking that probably we'd need to know what the absolute latest, in order for us to get done what we need to get done, would be by the end of July.
Okay.
All right, that would be the absolute, you know, to have it as close to the way we would have it. Because in the letter that I sent to the selectmen, what we decided was, there's a lot of things we won't do. Like, we won't use the inside of the library that we've used before.
Yep.
We will not have chalk drawing, because young children do not know how to social distance. We would have all the booths four feet apart from each other, which means we'd cut down on how many crafters we have. There's a lot of different things that we can do to social distance and to be smart.
Yep. Okay. So, Rich, do you want to formally vote to cancel?
I will make a motion that we recommend to the Arts Council that they cancel their summer concerts for July 7th and 21st.
Okay, I'll second that. Any other conversation? No?
No, I'm all set. We'll just wait and see how things go. Maybe by the end of June or sometime in July, you'll know more about the festival.
Okay, all right. So all those in favor, Rich? Fabian, aye?
LaCamera, aye.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joanne. And then Litter Lifters, was that part of?
Litter Lifters hasn't been lifting. We didn't do our April big thing that we usually do, the Massachusetts Great Pickup, which mostly everybody did cancel anyways. We did not pick up in May. It's really up to, you know, if you're canceling everything, we do it the third week of every month. But we also could do, we go through October. So if you cancel it, so we just cancel everything until the September pickup.
Okay. Yeah, that's all, I think, going, you know, according to all the other reopening stuff. So.
Well, that's what, I mean, if you're canceling everything else, I don't, I don't want, we don't, Litter Lifters doesn't want to be left out.
Yep. So, and again, you know, hopefully, we'll know by, you know, like you said, needing to know by the end of July, whatever, we'll be able to give you some idea.
Yeah.
Okay. Rich, keep freezing. Does, is he freezing on everyone, or is it just me?
Just you.
I can get you back, Rich. There you are. You keep freezing on me. I think I have everybody else moving around. All right, I can hear you fine, but it's just the picture is frozen. So. All right, Agenda Item Number?
Nine.
Nine. Nine. I'm distracted, because he's frozen. I move around and I can unfreeze him. But, okay. Agenda Item Number Nine, discuss and the performance bond for the old police station. So we have paperwork here from Nate Darling.
Yes.
Saying that the old police station has been demolished. There had been a performance bond that we kept, that we asked for at the time, just to be sure that everything was. He had said that the buyer shall demolish the existing building on the premises and remove all construction, other debris from the premises, and obtain a building. And obtain a building permit to reconstruct a building on the premises. And as far as we know, and the building inspector has certified that all those conditions that we put in place have been met.
I make a motion to, uh, release the performance bond associated with the old police station.
Okay, I second that. Any other conversation, Rich, on that?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, because, yep, we have the letter from the building inspector. That says, I have been asked to review the performance of conditions, and he signed off on it. So all those in favor, Fabian, I?
Camera, I.
Okay. Discuss early voting for September and November elections. Again, I just, um, wanted to. Make sure that this word gets out there that, um, for those elections, the state is looking to. Um, a lot of people are already talking about the presidential election. And I think one of the best ways to try to get that done is to extend the early voting. But for us, that means we have to work with the Parks Commission and everything to be sure that. You know, at least part of the building is going to be available for that. So. Um, I know Maureen, you have a list of things to discuss with the Parks Department. Is that on your list to discuss with them?
However, um, after talking to, um, the town clerk, um, the voting for September. And specifically the November elections, um, what the state is looking for seems, in my opinion, excessive. Um, for voting, like 18 days, to- total, um, so.
Eighteen days for the election, then 12 days for the primary.
Yeah, so.
Thirty days.
Yeah, so with the parks in the condition that there are now, that they've had to, um, put off their events. We're going to see an uptick in their events for the fall. Yeah, hopefully. And i- if that's true, um, then they're probably going to be using both rooms. Um, and we, because of, we want to make sure, um, elections are safe and secure. Um, we have to lock down whatever rooms are being used. So that leads me, um, to think that we might need to look for an alternative venue, um, for the early voting.
So do we have an alternative? I mean, I know we've done it at the police station, community room, the new police station. I know we've done it at the Council on Aging. It seems to me that, you know, the Council on Aging might be the best place. But it's also the smallest room, so I don't know, you know, if we're still going to be socially distancing and everything else.
So i- if we could partition off the back part of the Council on Aging. Uh, we could secure it in the way that it needs to, I believe. Um, but yeah, there's going to be a lot of foot traffic. That goes through, that it's really not set up for that type of foot traffic. Um, but we can explore that as a venue. Um, because we don't want to use the police station because people are going to be having all their meetings, um, going forward when we're out of COVID-19. Hopefully, um, and, and people can meet in person. And that's going to be our main meeting space for all of our boards and committees. So it runs its into like three different problems, uh, with having that many days. And having to secure the location.
I mean, we also, this is something that we may technically have to pay for some extra staff for. Correct? For the polling people?
Oh, well, yeah, because there's a lot more days. It's a lot more volunteer hours and.
Yeah.
Dedicated.
Um, so it's not something that we can do at Town Hall, I don't think, because we don't really have. We can lock it down.
Nope.
Um, so I guess we need to talk to the town clerk and see. Where she would like to do it, because like you said, it all has to be locked down.
Yeah, yeah. And it, it becomes, um, kind of an unfunded mandate to be, uh, to have the towns take the burden on this financially. Um, it's not that we had planned for, but now we'll have to incorporate that in our budget and, and move that. But if we have to rent a space, um, I, I mean, that's also an option. Uh, but, you know, I'll defer to you guys as, as to say that we want to actually go through that step. Um, ideally, we'd like to use it in, in buildings that we currently have. But only two that I can think of that are correctly set up for it are Lun Pond and the Police Station. And both of those present an issue.
Um, yeah, because of the amount of time. And, and we don't even know, because at one point, they said weekends were going to be part of that. And then they said they weren't. They said that weekends could be optional, so. Um, I don't, y- you know, um, and also if we are going to be doing in-person meetings again. Then, you know, we, a lot of us already use the Police Station Community Room, so. Okay, well.
I would suggest that maybe we look at, uh, renting some space either next to the Town Hall. Or maybe down at, uh, the old Sedells. I know there's space available there. And, uh, what's the one, um? Paul Mal- not Paul Malidi, um. He's got space down there. So I mean, that, that's, that's a possibility, you know, something close by.
Next to the bike shop, is that? I think, I think that's good, but I think traveling up that hill and in their parking area might not be sufficient.
Oh, no, I'm talking to the one before that. I don't know if there's any space in there. Yeah, but, um, so, I mean, because if, if the requirements are that it needs to be locked down, which it does. Then that certainly puts us in a bind. We can't do it at the police station for sure, because we need that. We can't give up 30 days. Of eating space. And then it's not fair to the Park Commission, you know, either, to tie up, you know, that amount of time. And then the COA, which will probably just be opening, reopening by then. Which once again would limit a lot of their programs, so. Um, I, I, I don't know. I mean, and I think the, if I'm not mistaken, Maureen. Didn't the Park Commission agree to do the one in November, I think?
Um, they've agreed to do this one thus far, and I think the one they agreed in November wasn't as extensive as we're asking. Right now, but they did agree to.
What about the Old Town Hall? Is that secure?
Uh, that is secure. There's no heat in there.
Okay.
We do have a new handicap ramp there, which is good.
Yeah, I mean, we could, you know, um.
Possibility, I guess.
Possibility, we could, you know, if we were worried about security, we could hire, we could have a detail, we could ask the, uh, police chief to put an extra. You know, car and whatever. Um, I mean, this is voting. This is what we're talking about. This is our right to vote. And, you know, um, we have the handicapped ramp there. It's just the heat.
What the space, what the space needs, you know, I'll, I'll have a conversation with Willian and, and we can see if that space is big enough. For what we need, but I think it's the same size as the police station room.
It's bigger than the.
It's bigger.
It's pretty big. For me, it would just be the heat. I mean, September might be fine, but it would be the November. You know, the two weeks, whatever many days they're requiring before the election. The election's usually the first Tuesday of the month, is that correct? So it would be the last couple of weeks of October, and it can still be pretty chilly then.
And there would be porta potties for.
Restrooms.
But yeah.
Yep, so.
Everyone loves a porta potty.
Yeah, but, I mean, y- you know.
If it's what we have to do in order to make it work, I mean, we can, we can make it work. But yeah, I'll explore, um, a couple of these, uh, options. And we'll see dollar-wise where it brings us, if it's even an option for us to rent any of these spaces. Or, or if we should just explore finishing, uh, well, once that ramp is finished, which the people were out there the other day. You know, fixing that, um, lip.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we have, if we have it, we should use it.
Yep, and, um, maybe the next time we talk about this, we'll have, uh, the town clerk with us again and she can weigh in directly. Um, okay. All right, so we are thinking, we all have our thinking caps on. All right, uh, number 11. So this was, let's see, in our meeting on February 10th, we accepted the donation of a vacant piece of land on Evergreen Road. Um, Town Council has prepared the deed for our signatures, Rich. Town Council recommended that the board take an actual vote to sign the deed. Um, once signed, the estate's attorney will record the deed. Um, and there was $31.40 in back taxes that, uh, is in the process of being paid. So I made.
Came in today.
That came in today, okay.
Okay.
So, that's good. So I will make a motion that we sign this deed as a. Finish this acceptance of this donated piece of land on Evergreen Road.
Second.
All those, any other conversation? Nope. All those in favor?
I.
Fabian, I?
The camera, I.
Okay. Uh, anyone here snoring? That's my dog, sorry. So, let's see, review and vote to award, uh, Sursage, is that how we say that? Uh, DPW Supply and Paper bids. Um, so, we have gone out for, S E R S G. Has gone out to bid for DPW Services from July 1st, 2020 to June 30th. 2021, correct?
Yep.
I have attached the bid results for our review. Dense grated crushed stone, LaRusso Corp. 1445 per ton, three-quarter inch stone, LaRusso Corporation, 1825 per ton. Catch Basin Square Grates, John Holdley and Sons, $124 each. Recycled asphalt, LaRusso Corporation, $9.80 per ton. Hot Fix, T L Edwards, $63.85 per ton. Winter Mix, T L Edwards, $94.75 per ton. Mid-grade unleaded gasoline, Dennis K. Burke Incorporated, .0552 per gallon. Ultra-low sulfur diesel, Dennis K. Burke Incorporated, .0582 per gallon. And Franklin Moniz, who is the Highway Superintendent, has reviewed the bid results and recommends approval. Do we want to do these separately or?
No, you, you don't have to. You can, um, you can just vote to approve the bids as presented. But I do, on the Dennis K. Burke.
Yep.
That .0552 per gallon is not the actual price that we will be paying. That is their charge per gallon for delivery plus tax. Um, price per gallon varies on a daily basis according to the Boston, um, the Boston job. Um, low.
Okay, so this is in addition to the price?
That's in addition to the actual price per gallon.
Okay. All right.
I make a, I make a motion, we, uh, approve the, uh, the bids as presented from July 1, 2020. To June 30th, 2021, okay?
Okay, I second that. And, uh, for the record, it's 20 pounds of. White eight and a half by 11 cartons, $31 per carton, 20 pound white eight and a half by 14. $34.30 per carton. Any other conversation there, Rich?
Did you want that vote separately, Tracy, or is it all together, okay?
Yes, please.
Separately?
I mean, together is okay?
Yeah, separate.
Okay.
The motion I just made had to do with the bids for the High Rate Department.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll second that. All those in favor, Fabian, I?
The camera, I.
All right, and then the paper bids are 20 pound, eight and a half by 11, 31 per carton. 20 pound, eight and a half by 14, for $34.30 per carton. So, I made.
Second that motion.
Okay, any conversation on that one? All in favor, Fabian, I?
The camera, I.
All right.
I missed that.
All right, request for Old Colony Elder Services. Uh, the board has received a request from Old Colony Elder Services to appoint a representative for Lakeville to serve on their Board of Directors. Currently, Kelly Howley is Lakeville's representative. Kelly is our Council on Aging Director. The appointment would, uh, the appointment term would expire June 30th, 2021. So I will make a motion to appoint Kelly Howley to Old Colony Elder Services as our Lakeville representative.
Second.
Any conversation? All those in favor, Fabian, I?
Uh, the camera, I.
Okay. Um. Just for the record, I have not gotten any notice on questions. We haven't had any questions, so. That was kind of easy, huh? Um, new business? Anybody new business?
Madam Chair, I had some business I wanted to discuss.
Okay.
We, uh, we need to figure out some, uh, some strategies on our vacations. Um, and how we're going to get through them at the end of the year. As you know, we've, um, we've asked some of the people to stay on. And, and we've had lots of different scenarios going on this year than we've ever had before. Um, so we're going to have some leftover vacation, um, time that we need to decide what to do with for our employees. So my recommendation would be to give the employees a choice whether or not to roll over, um, an additional five days of vacation. Or, uh, or have it paid out, um, by the end of the year. And with the rollover, um, I would request that they use it by June 2021. Um, and, uh, let our Human Resources Director know, um, by June 1st. If they're going to choose to roll over, uh, an additional five days or to get it paid out, um, by the end of the year.
Okay, so, um. According to the Personnel Handbook, they can roll over five days, correct?
Correct, this would be in addition to.
So this would be in addition to. Okay, um, Rich, do you want to have a conversation on that?
I, I, I don't have a problem with, um, the town administrators, you know, uh. Recommendation, because, you know, we've, we've asked people not to take their vacation time.
Yeah.
Uh, right now, especially the, uh, fire department and the first responders. And, um, to squeeze everything right now into, you know, less than, I guess, six weeks now it's left. Um, I think it's, uh, unreasonable to expect them to do that. We know that a lot of employees had vacations that were already scheduled. And they canceled, you know, those vacations. And so, um. I think this is a, a good, uh, recommendation that we ought to approve it. Because we, we all felt, I think, that things may have gotten better, you know. But it hasn't gotten better, even though the governor is opening up, you know, certain types of businesses and so forth. From the town's perspective, we certainly aren't going to be there, you know, for at least, you know, two or three months anyways.
Yeah, and the, and part of the reason we're doing so well is because we had all hands on deck a- all this time. And that's why, you know, we're, we're not behind in most of the functions of Town Hall right now. Um, it's, it, the dedication of the people and staying on and being able to do what the job needed to be done while, uh. While doing all the different, either working remotely or, you know, splitting their shifts or doing all those things.
Okay, so if, um, we do make some kind of a vote today, then we have to ratify it at another meeting, correct?
Correct. So the vote would be to authorize, um. Let's see, the vote would be to authorize, uh, to offer, uh, town employees with additional vacation time. Um, additional to what the Personnel Handbook allows, an additional five days to roll over before June 2021. Or, um, a payout of those five vacation days.
So moved.
Okay, um, I second. Can we just clarify a little bit? So. So let's say someone has six vacation days still available to them.
Only five of them would be eligible. Only five of them would be eligible to either roll over or get paid for. The other one they'll have to use or lose.
Okay. Let's say someone has eleven vacation days. They can automatically roll over five according to the handbook.
Correct.
And then we would allow them to roll over five.
Max is five more, yep.
Okay, or?
Or. Yep.
Or buy out those five days.
But n- no combination of, just either or.
Just either or.
And they would have to let Clarinda know by June first.
Yeah.
Just in order for us to be able to keep track of it.
Yep, and unlike the the handbook says, any extra, any rolled over days have to be used by within six months, correct?
And they, that wouldn't change, that would still be under the same, but these additional ones would be able to use by June twenty twenty-one, because we don't want everything to kind of fall together and be crushed in the same timetable.
Okay, so, um, Rich, any conversation about that?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, um, all those in favor? Fabian, aye.
The camera, aye.
Okay, and Maureen, the only thing that I would ask is that if an email can go out, you know, to employee, not just through the department head on that one.
Yep, absolutely, and um I'll make sure Clarinda gets, uh, Clarinda and I will work on it together and make sure we have everything. But as far as it goes, I I think this is the way to solve an issue. We don't wanna have a ghost town in the last couple of weeks.
And and I mean, we know, not, no, no, and you know, COVID nineteen hasn't been fair to anyone, but, you know, we've asked a lot of people and in in a lot of cases, and, you know, um, I, we have great people that are working for us, so. Um, okay, uh, any other new business? Tracy, anything from you? Nope. Um, okay, Rich, anything?
All set, thanks.
All right, me too, I'm all set. Um, and now we will talk, oh, if we can just make sure to get the ratified vote on the June first meeting on that, thank you, Tracy. Um, and then old business. Any, anything, Maureen, old business?
Um, not for me.
Rich, Rich?
Well, as far as the uh, there's no further updates on the Lakeville Hospital property, you know, as I said at the last meeting, they're they're working on their their plans and um, probably won't see it until uh first part of June, mid-June. As far as the uh Lakeville Country Club is concerned, uh, we have had, you know, correspondence with the existing owner about the back taxes, and uh, he has asked us to clarify um, what what he, we're we're asking them for, so we have a follow-up letter that's being drafted by Town Council, you know, right now, and uh, we would probably get that in the next couple of days, I would think, Maureen.
Yep, a couple of days.
So, and then we will uh send that to him, so that's kind of where we are, you know, as far as those two things are concerned.
Okay, all right, Tracy, old business, anything?
No.
All right, um, so our next meeting is June first, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, June first. Um, do we wanna go later, Rich? Do we wanna stay with three o'clock?
I don't care what it is, it doesn't make any difference to me.
All right, I'm gonna say three o'clock then. All right.
Uh, excuse me, just one more thing. One more thing under old business, um, as you know, the governor has come out with uh his phase four plan, you know, today, and it's gonna be a changing, moving, you know, target, and um I, I know that Lear, you and um, Maureen have discussed, you know, certain things to be reopened and so forth and so on, and we have to work with the Board of Health, et cetera, et cetera. Um, do we wanna try to set a meeting up next week to uh to discuss any of those reopenings, or we just wanna continue just going along like we planned?
Um, I'm gonna be away for a few days without Wi-Fi next week, so, um, yeah, I know. Uh, back in the olden days, I used to have a little antenna um that I would take with me, so, um. Um, I've, I'm gonna try to talk to Derek, who's the Chairman of the Board of Health, and I was hoping that um Maureen could keep in touch with Nate Darling, who's the um Director of Inspection Services. And uh, if need be, and I'm not here, I, maybe I could try to phone in if we need to have a meeting. Um, and not do Zoom, but just do like the phone connection part of it. So we'll just have to see how some of it plays out, I guess.
So, Madam Chair, I gave them a ton of information, all of them. Um, so they're gonna have to sort through all of the information from the governor today. I I also made you guys some packets, because I know how you love paper.
I did a bunch of those emails coming in.
Yep, yep, so I made them into packets um for people to to be able to get a better grasp on all the things that are changing for the governor's uh announcements today and everything that's on um, on the mass.gov website. So there is a ton of information that they're gonna have to sort through and come up with um some parameters. Um, so um, I'll I'll keep in touch with them and see where they're at as far as them getting through all that.
Yeah.
And and we can set something up if they're ready to discuss it.
Okay, okay, yeah, maybe you can just keep us, you know, um, I can certainly talk to Derek, but if you can just keep the communication going and if they need us for, you know, as far as our own Town Hall, um, it's not our intention just yet to just open the doors right up again. Um, we've been conducting business right along. People have been able to do, you know, pretty much everything. Um, get their, you know, um, personal records, birth records, death certificates, all kinds of stuff, marriage licenses and um, paying their taxes and whatever, so I think we continue at Town Hall just a little bit for now, the way that it is. Uh, maybe the building department can open themselves up for um appointments, but we're gonna leave that up to, you know, Nate.
No, I don't think we're ready to do that yet.
Yeah, I mean.
I know, I know Nate's not ready to do that yet, because then if you have appointments, that means people are gonna be coming into the building.
Well, right, we don't really have a.
And his area is not really a s- secure area to do that, so I think that has to be looked at.
Yeah.
Um, he says that, you know, he's able to, you know, deal with what has been requested of him over the phone and
Yep.
and so forth, so, um.
We're very lucky, we have robust online services to provide for the public, and we've been able to really get people to use those services. And in the one-off chances, we're we're, one-off situations, we've been able to have workarounds around it for right now, but you know, I agree with both of you, I I don't think we should um make any changes to Town Hall at this time. I think it's working fine.
I mean, another, you know, another, another one of our big, my big concerns is that our fire department is right at Town Hall. I mean, we don't have a massive fire department. We've done our best to try to keep, you know, the chief has done his best to try to keep everyone from getting sick. They've had COVID nineteen calls, they're doing, you know, don't wanna open up Town Hall and you know, have some complacency, because then we may lose a lot of our, you know, essential staff to um, to COVID nineteen. So we've done so good so far that I just don't wanna reopen it too quickly and run the risk of, you know, um, anyone getting sick right now, so.
Yeah, no, we've got, we've got a few weeks to untangle, you know, what we want, and and I've got um multiple iterations of uh of what opening looks like, and I'm gonna weigh it against what the state has said and 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 modify um some of my initial plans and and what they look like.
Yeah.
But making sure that whatever we change and make public facing, I'll let the public know instantly, you know, once we've made that change, if we have something different um that we're gonna go with, just in case it changes the way that they're gonna do stuff, but.
But, I mean, even, you know, yeah, even like some inspections and everything that, you know, that they've been able to do them to outside structures, whatever, work has been getting done right along, so I don't see any reason why we need to change, you know, any of that, because it's, you know, it's getting done. Again, just from our own inner workings at Town Hall, I wish there was a couple more boards taking advantage of using like Zoom like we're doing right now to to conduct business, because I don't want that kind of stuff to get behind. So then, maybe you can give them an encouraging voice to, Maureen. I've reached out to a couple of the uh chairpeople, and uh maybe you can too, just, you know.
I will, because we do need to continue on with the business of the town and to make sure that we're not, you know, artificially causing log jams, um, because reluctance to use technology. Um, Zoom, i- i- it, it's not the best, I mean, we all have issues with it, but being able to get the business of the town done has been a real, I don't know, blessing in this time, as as opposed to us just stopping.
I mean, I have a newer laptop. It was, the the most difficult thing for me was um getting my pop-ups to stop blocking Zoom or whatever. I didn't even have to set up a Zoom account, because the town has that, Lake Cam has that. You know, so, and all I do is literally just hit the invite, and I'm there, so it's not.
Yeah, and Tracy and I have made ourselves available to all the boards and committees. Um, and, you know, we'll reiterate that, and maybe Tracy will send out a nice message to all the boards and committees again. Um, I know she's been, she's been sending them out, but, you know, send them out again and make sure that they know that we're available as a resource, and if they need us, you know, to help navigate their way through using the meetings, it will be there.
You know, I just don't want people to think that, oh, okay, well, phase one, we should be meeting in person by June.
Not gonna happen.
No, not gonna happen. Let's just try to get the work done that weekend. Um, so I still have no questions. So, um, Jose has kept me up to date. There is still no question, so our first attempt at public questions yielded no questions, but I guess.
Success, it's a success.
Yeah, so, um, does anyone else have anything that can come properly before the meeting? Okay, so, with that in mind, let me get my uh my paper here. Yes.
Before we go into executive session, um, I I have several things that need your signatures from this meeting. So you're all prepared and in the sign folder?
Okay, um, what time is it? Four twenty thirty? Okay, all right, I'll either be by this afternoon or uh with my mask on.
I need Rich's signatures too as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be fine.
All right, so, um, we, uh, let's see, I make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Arch up to thirty A, section twenty-one A three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, specifically the firefighters union, police union, and laborers union. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the board, and the chair so declares, and the chair does declare that to be true.
Uh, yeah. I can, seconds.
Okay, not to go back into open session.
There you go.
Okay, uh, Fabian, aye.
Uh, the camera, aye.
All right, so I will see you guys at executive session.
Yeah.